Is there Morgan up here?
All right, good evening, Planning Commission members. So tonight, we are missing both the Chairman and the Vice Chair. And in accordance with Robert's rules, we'll need one of the Commissioners to call the meeting to order. Jenna, would you do us the pleasure?
I certainly will. I call the September 8th, 2022 meeting of the Planning Commission to order.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Jaeger. Also, in accordance with Robert's rules, in the absence of both the Chair and the Vice Chair, the Planning Commissioners need to immediately move to elect a temporary chairperson for the meeting tonight and preside over the meeting, so.
Yes, I'd like, if you're willing, Jen, I'd like to nominate you to serve as Chairman tonight.
Second.
Okay, and just to vote on that, everybody in favor of that say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. All right. Yeah, so if you would like to go ahead and move into the middle chair, and then we can start the meeting. Thank you.
All right, I've already called the meeting to order, so, and I would just like to say, first time doing this, so familiar with planning, not necessarily with Robert's Rules of Order, so please be patient with me. I see you can't hear me. Thank you. So be patient with me as I work through Robert's Rules, but otherwise, should go smoothly. Jessica, if you could please do a roll call.
Dana Camp.
Here.
Nonette Reese. Robin Bridges. Warren McCord. Bob Rittenbach.
Here.
Wendy Birmingham.
David Wisdom.
Here.
Joseph H. Strip. Jenna Jaeger.
Here. All right, so we just have a quorum. And before we start, what I would like to do is just give a brief overview of the process for this meeting tonight of the Auburn City Planning Commission. The Commission is presented with agenda items by the city planning staff. The representative for the agenda item will have the opportunity to make comments and/or answer specific questions from the Commission. For the items that require it, I will then open a public hearing. And this will be an opportunity for any citizen to come forward to address the Commission about the agenda item that is at hand. We would like for everyone who would like to speak to take the opportunity to speak, but I would ask that you keep your time to talk to five minutes, and please keep your comments relevant to the particular case at hand. And after everyone has spoken, I will close the public hearing. The representative and the staff will then have an opportunity to answer any questions from the Commissioners and respond to issues that were brought up during the public hearing. And then I will open the floor to the Commissioners for discussion, motions, and a vote. The Commission will vote based on state and local laws, the city's Comprehensive Plan 2030, and for the general good of the community. Since I've summarized the basics of the Planning Commission process hearing, I would also like to summarize our role and responsibility related to the approval of subdivision plats. By Alabama statute, a municipal planning commission such as ours is the final approval authority for subdivision plats. With regards to plats, the Commission acts as an administrative body and is bound by the limitations contained in state laws, the city zoning ordinances, and the subdivision regulations previously adopted by this Commission. While public hearings are required on most plats, and we welcome any and all public comments concerning these items, please understand that our Commission's authority is strictly limited to confirming that the plat meets or exceeds the specific requirements codified in the laws and regulations previously described. I would ask that if you intend to speak during any public hearing this evening, please sign in with your name and address for the record. Also, state your name and address when you approach the podium, and limit your comments to five minutes. And finally, I would like to make a point for the public in attendance. As you know, the Planning Commission is an advisory body for the city council, except in the case of subdivision decisions. All other decisions will be made by city council after consideration of the Planning Commission's position. So all, most of our items will be sent on to the city council for final decision. So with that, I will start with, let me get my agenda out. So we have no old business. We do have the consent agenda to go through. The consent agenda tonight consists of approval of the minutes from last meeting, and it has two other items. One is a final plat for Quail Chase Subdivision, Phase 1. And so those are, those are the two items that we have to, to go through. Is there a Commissioner that needs to pull anything out of the consent agenda? And so what we will also do at this point in time is we will have citizens' communications for anything that's on the consent agenda that you might want to talk about, or any other item related to planning issues that is not on the agenda. So if you have any item that you would like to speak to that is not represented later in a public hearing, this would be your opportunity to come and speak. All right, so seeing no one, I will close the, ooh, public hearing. And then I would ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No mood. Jacketed.
Motion second, all approved, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so that disposes of our consent agenda. Under new business tonight, we have the next item, and I believe, I'm not sure he's presenting that for us tonight, but under new business, the Preserve Public Hearing's meeting.
This is a preliminary plat request for the Preserve, Phase 6. This is the site right here along West Farmville. I'm sure that you're familiar with the Preserve. This is Phase 6. It has been in effect since approximately 2005. The zoning of the Preserve is DDH with a PDD overlay, and it is that similar zoning all around with rural in the surrounding areas and some outside of city limits. This is the most recently approved master development plan for the Preserve. You'll see the proposed Phase 6 in the next slide matches with the Phase 6 that was designed in 2017 as part of this master development plan. And we do require that the phases are consistent with this master development plan, which this is. The only difference is a few less lots and a little bit significant, a little increased acreage. So it changed the density from 2.46 in this plan to 2.22 in the next proposed plan, which is page one of it right here, and page two right here. It is going to be a total of 249 lots on 112 acres. And as I said, it does comply with the master development plan and our subdivision regulations. We have some notational conditions, and we've been working with the applicant on getting those fixed before the final plat. So those will be addressed before that comes to you. We had a citizen with a list of questions that you all received. We have hopefully answered those. I know he's here with one more, but we hopefully have answered those questions. And do you have any questions for me?
Thank you. Would the representative or applicant like to speak before I open the public hearing?
Good evening, I'm Kenneth White with Flowers and White. I'm here to entertain any questions. You did a wonderful job explaining this, this preliminary plat. As she said, it's a DDH with a PDD overlay. I can entertain any questions. Should y'all have any?
All right, thank you. All right, this agenda item does require a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this time. If you come forward, please, five minutes, and state your name and address for the record.
Hey, I'm Don Connor, 2317 Farmville Road. So I'm across the street from Farmville, from the development. And I had some concerns about this road, new road, this intersection across from my home and David Harton. Morgan's been great about getting some answers for me, and I appreciate that. And just kind of go over those real quick. I wanted to make sure there was going to be an exception. First of all, that intersection is, by my count, going to be the easiest way for the owners of about 118 homes to get in and out. And I've been assured that there will be a, they call it a right turn lane, but I assume that's a deceleration lane in Farmville, and a left turn lane in Farmville to allow people to get in. And of course, my concern in David's is congestion in Farmville. I pulled out of my driveway last night and had to immediately accelerate to 60 miles an hour so a truck wouldn't just ride up on me, you know? Forty-five is kind of a joke out there. So speed is, is a real concern for all of us. And I'm glad they are gonna treat it like a major intersection, because it certainly is. I asked what the right of way was, it's 80 feet. I measured the road at about 20, and a right turn lane's about 12. So it looked like the, the owners of these homes who have families and inevitably have put up a wood fence behind them. I was curious how far it was from the back of the curb of the deceleration lane to that property line. And it works out to about 18 feet, which seems fine. Only other comment I've gotten, I know y'all are not the water board, but my water pressure stinks. And I've been told, I'm at the end of the line. The water tower that was built was done when we, I guess all this is our fault, because we started Camden Ridge, and everybody was like, who wants to live out there far? And it's just grown and grown. But that water tower was built over 20 years ago, and it's just not adequate. The distance is, is too great. The elevation is inadequate, and this is coming from, from the water board people. And so I hope that we all get a chance to have developers in here that you'll be looking for a new water tower site, because we sure need it, and boy, are they gonna need it. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak to this item?
Actually, I have a question. I don't know if that's appropriate.
You're welcome to come up and speak. Just state your name and address. Is it, is it regarding this, this item? Yeah, if you'll just give me your name and your address, and then Will will answer your question during the comments.
Great, thank you. My name is Nick Phillips. I live at 2770 Partridge Lane, which, can't see it on this map, but it's in the Pear Tree Farms subdivision. I think actually, the next phase backs up to our house. But anyway, it's my understanding that there has to be some sort of buffer maintained between parcels of land with different zoning classifications. So for example, Pear Tree Farms, classified rural, and this particular subdivision for the Preserve, as was mentioned, is, help me out, zoning.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get it clarified for you.
What is the plan, if any, for a buffer between Pear Tree Farms and the Preserve in this particularly Phase 6 and then, excuse me, Phase 7?
Okay, okay, we'll get that question answered from staff.
Thank you.
During our discussion. Thank you.
Please make sure to sign in.
And sign in too, please, if you haven't signed in.
Right here.
Anybody else like to speak on this item? All right, seeing no one, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And we will open discussion with the Commissioners. Does anybody have any questions that they would like to ask? I know I have a couple, but if anybody else would like to ask any questions of staff?
I just want to get maybe a little bit more clarification about the water tower situation and the water pressure. Is that something that you all have looked at?
Yes. The water tower out there is only being built to about half of its full capacity because of the low density in the area. There's water quality issues we have to consider. I wasn't aware of anybody, of any complaints about low pressure out there, so I'm not sure who the gentleman spoke to, but I can look at that. But as more homes are built, we will be able to fill that water tower higher, which will in turn produce more pressure. So hopefully, that will provide some relief in the future.
Thank you.
And as far as the second gentleman that came up, staff, do y'all have any clarification that you could help clarify his question?
Yes, the answer is there are no buffer yards required.
That's what I thought. Thank you.
And that's because it's between residential and residential?
Also, it's a conventional subdivision, and they do not require buffer yards, as opposed to a performance.
And then I do have a couple of questions for staff about, I did read through the email that Mr. Connor sent earlier today, and I noticed a lot of the, his questions were about street improvements and some things of that nature. Is that something that is going to be worked out, like in a development agreement? Do we have a development agreement in place for this, a development agreement? Sorry, I'm not speaking into my microphone.
That's okay. We are working with the developer on an updated development agreement for this next phase, and then subsequent phase. It is not finalized at this time, but it will cover standard infrastructure items, not covered in our development manuals.
Okay, and so we're approving tonight a, for consideration, a preliminary plat. So would that development agreement be in place before we would see the final plat?
Yes, we've, we've asked that the development agreement be in place before the development review team, which are the engineering plans be approved.
Okay.
So approving the preliminary plat essentially gives them some guarantee that you guys are okay with the development moving forward, and they'll move forward with engineering after this.
But no lots would be sold until that final plat is approved and recorded?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, would like to make a motion?
They do approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second? Do we need to do a roll call, or can I just yea and nay?
You can just say if everybody agrees.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I didn't say aye. All right. Our next item of business tonight is Miracle Road Town Homes, UMD.
Good evening, Commissioners. The request for you is for a conditional use approval for a performance residential development, specifically a multiple unit development. The property is located at 1764 Miracle Road in the DDH zoning district. The property is located to the east of Woodward Oaks PDD and to the west of Auburn Farms PDD. As I mentioned, zoned DDH, which does require conditional use approval for a multi-unit development. Here is the site plan for the proposed development. It consists of 32 dwelling units on approximately 9.2 acres. Proposed development and density are conforming to the Future Land Use Designation of Low Density Residential, and staff does recommend approval with conditions. In your packet meeting, there were some conditions in that staff report with some conversations between the project engineer and staff. We felt that some of those conditions could be removed. So those are conditions from planning number two and five. And there were some additional conversations with Water Resource Management about sewer and water utilities, and those will be addressed during engineering plan review. So we felt those conditions could be removed as well. But I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant's representative is for site group, and I did not receive any communication from the public on this one.
This item requires a public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak, or the representative?
Be happy to hear your question.
Okay, thanks. All right, I will open the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this issue, please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
My name is John R. Brownfield. Address is 1277 Sarah Lane, which is right across the street from this development. I'm intrigued that, that there are that many houses being put there, or that many dwelling units. I'm not aware of any sewer on the road at this time. All of it's septic. The whole area is single dwelling units. As far as I know, there are a couple of duplexes all the way across Miracle Road, but it seems like a great divergence from what I had expected in the area. Thank you.
We'll get that question answered on the sewer. Anybody else like to speak? All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have any comments, questions from Commissioners?
I'll ask the question that the gentleman, gentleman asked of staff about the sewer access sewer system for that much development.
Okay, Auburn Farms, just down the road, is putting in a sewer pump station. And one of the plans was to have an onsite pumping system to pump to that gravity main that would go down to that pump station. There's another option they're looking at, pumping the sewer down to the gravity main down on Salhatchie Creek. They haven't determined which route they want to take right now, but both of them are available, so.
And is that the condition in here for the lift station that needs to be in operation before?
That was the original comment, but that has been removed because they're looking at another alternative. So we remove that, that comment at this time.
Is a condition, okay. But they will not be septic?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question. Probably for, for the applicant's rep. This piece of this property that's adjoining or pointing at Miracle Road that does not have any units on there, what, what is that going to be? Is that open space? It is going to be open space. Okay, and can you tell me about what's going in the buffer yard, particularly between the two single-family homes in this development?
So the, the open space is actually on the east side of the development that's hatched on the site plan. In that area, on the little finger of Miracle Road, that's just a leftover piece. It's, you know, it's not gonna be. It's, you know, it's not going to be utilized. It'll just probably remain undisturbed as it is right now. In regards to buffering, we'll be meeting the 15-foot buffer yard requirements in planning them, you know, per the city requirements. You know, one of the conditions on here is to provide a 10-by-10 outdoor patio. So we'll have 10-by-10 outdoor patios on the back of every unit outside of the buffer yard, and then we'll have the city-required buffer yards there.
Are, what type of plantings are going to be back there? Beyond those patios?
It'll be plantings to city requirements. If there's a specific species you're looking for, you know.
I'm looking for evergreens.
Yeah, I mean, we will, yeah, I mean, the city's requirements has evergreens. Logan, is there a true 15-foot buffer between them?
Yes, there is a 15-foot buffer required. The species, developers have a wide list of species they can choose from. So if you're specifically wanting evergreen to be used, that could be a condition that you could place if the applicant's amenable to it. But just to give you an idea of the landscaping required, it'd be 181 tree inches for the total site. 108 of them would be canopy trees, which have to be at least two inches in diameter when planted, and 277 shrubs. And those are kind of dispersed throughout the site and in the buffer yards.
But I mean, they can be grouped, you know, there's a certain amount that have to be along the road frontage.
Right.
But then the other ones, we can, you know, that's probably where a majority of our plantings are going to be concentrated anyways, just because to the east side is our open space. So it's going to be natural on that side.
And that open space for right now is not going to be used?
The open space is floodplain
Okay.
on the east side there. So there's, there's not much we can do within that just regarding to city's regulations.
Any other questions for staff? I do want to ask about the conditions, if those are, do we need to make them with our motion to remove, or they?
We've updated the staff report. We just didn't have a chance to get that to y'all before.
I just wanted to make sure if we needed to take them out, that we took them out.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions? I do want to ask about the private road right now. Any update since, you know, two days ago on the dedication of that?
No, ma'am, no update.
But that is a requirement of this development, that that road be dedicated?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
I've talked with Mike Mayer, who's with Precision, who's running with the final plat on that. So the way that's broken up, there's three plats. There's the plating of Miracle Road for the relocation. There's the plating of Sarah Lane, converting that to a city street. And then there's a third plat for the Auburn Farms development. The, it was my understanding, the plat for the Miracle Road reroute was pretty much ready to go and was being submitted back to the city for final signatures to get recorded. The Sarah Lane plat, the owner has signed, but they have to collect the signatures for all the property owners that abut that, dedicating the required 10-foot easements. So they're in the process of collecting all those easements that were previously, you know, negotiated with all those property owners. And then the final plat for the homes, is my understanding, is after the first of the year. So it's, it's our understanding that this plat for Sarah Lane and for Miracle Road will be done by the end of the year.
Okay.
So that's the latest item.
No, that's very helpful, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve CU 2022-039 with, with conditions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is Taco Bell.
Yes. This is a conditional use request for a road service use, a fast food restaurant at 1521 East Glen Avenue. This is near the intersection of East Glen and East University in a commercial development area with stores, a restaurant, a vet office, myriad of things. There's currently a car wash there, and that will be removed. The property is zoned CDD, and as you can see, the surrounding area is as well on almost all side, on all sides. This is the site plan that has been provided. It's a 2,551-square-foot restaurant, and it meets our development standards for the zoning district, as well as our special development standards for fast food restaurants specifically. And it will meet the corridor regulations for its location on East Glen. The applicant is familiar with all of these regulations, and we recommend approval. This is an elevation.
It's with conditions?
Yes, yes it is. Three planting and an engineering one. Thank you very much. Would the applicant like to speak, or the representative? All right, this does require a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to speak, come forward and give your name and address. You have five minutes. All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the Commission?
Now, my only concern was that there would still be access from the Glen Avenue entrance to the bank. And it looks like there is, that's still maintained. And I think that was, we discussed that at a packet, and that was maintained. So that was my biggest concern. So given that, I'll make a motion to accept this agenda item, 2022-040, as, as proposed, forward to the city.
With staff conditions?
With conditions.
With conditions.
Second.
We have a motion in a second? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Item passes. Next, item agenda is Auburn South Core.
Yes, good evening. This request is for a recommendation to City Council for conditional use approval for a commercial and entertainment use, specifically a lounge. And the property is located at 200 West Glen Avenue, Suite 200. Here's an aerial of the site. The, there's Waffle House to the east, and, thank you. There's 191 down on the corner of College and Glen. This use is to be a self-core taproom within an existing multi-tenant retail building. They plan to have about 40 taps of different beers, wine, other alcohol beverages. And those taps will be controlled by a touchscreen monitor, and you'll have an RFID card to limit your activities, your drinking activities. Staff feels that the use is in line with the zoning and future land use designation of Urban Core, and recommends forwarding to City Council with a recommendation for approval with conditions.
Thank you. Would the applicant or representative care to speak?
I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, this agenda item does require a public hearing, so I will open the public hearing at this point in time. Would anyone like to come forward? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the Commission? Or a motion?
I'll move approval of this particular agenda item, CU 2022-041, with staff conditions.
I will second. So we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion carries.
All right, hello again. Next up is a request for a recommendation to City Council for conditional use approval for a road service use, specifically a coffee shop with drive-through. The property is going to be located on North Donahue Drive, just south of Shug Jordan and north of Ruthway, the Owens Crossing neighborhood, right there, adjacent. The request will be for a 4,000-square-foot bookstore, and they'll have an ancillary coffee shop with order and pickup windows that are there on the, we'll call it the west side. Won't be the traditional electronic box like McDonald's or Taco Bell, but just sort of in-person order and pickup window. The zoning here is CDD. You've got DDH to adjacent the Owens Crossing, and also CDD surrounding the property on the other sides. And this property is in the master-planned mixed-use, future land use. Staff feels that the use is in harmony with the zoning and the future land use, and recommends forwarding to City Council with a recommendation for approval with conditions.
Very much. Would the representative like to speak?
If you have any questions.
All right, thank you. All right, this also requires a public hearing, so I'll open that at this point. Would anyone like to comment on this item? All right, seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. And we'll have comments, or motion from the Commission.
Motion to forward to City Council with recommendation for approval with conditions.
Second.
All right, I have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? All right, the motion carries.
All right, last for me tonight is a request for a waiver to the subdivision regulations. You will be familiar with this request. You've seen a few in the past months. A waiver to allow less than 500 feet between non-adjacent flaglots on the same side of the street. And the property is located at 3948 Cotton Valley Lane, which is, you'll see on the proxy map here, it's outside of the city limits. It is adjacent to existing city limits, but majority of property in the area is outside of the city limits. Here's an aerial shot, vegetated property. There's nothing on there at this time. Here is a illustration showing the distance between the flaglots on the same side of the street, Cotton Valley Lane Dog Legs to the east there at the subject property, which provides only about 70 feet of right-of-way for the entire 48 acres that they're looking to subdivide. And those two flaglots are close to 400 feet to the west. Here's a plat, pretty zoomed out, but it shows the entirety of the subject property. The lot in the middle in the gray is what they're hoping to subdivide out of the larger piece. Here's a zoom in that shows how the property will be subdivided at the right-of-way, providing 30 feet of right-of-way to each of the lots. Lee County subdivision regulations require 60 feet for a standard lot, and these would be considered flaglots. Both of these properties, like I mentioned, are outside of, or this entire property is outside of the city limits, but it is contiguous to the city limits, so could be annexed at some time. But staff does recommend approval of the waiver request.
All right, thank you. Is a representative here who would like to speak? All right, thank you very much. This also requires a public hearing, so I'll open that at this point. If there's anyone who would like to speak, please come forward and state your name and address. All right, seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Do we have comments or a motion?
I have some questions. I have some questions. First, to engineering, the 60-foot private access, in the packet, it says it could become a public road when they decide to go ahead and further subdivide Lot 1. If they decide to annex into the city, would that meet all regulations?
Yeah, the 60, the 60 feet is the minimum county right-of-way width. So in the event that they opted to do additional development on that property, and it needed to be converted to right-of-way, the 60 feet would cover that.
Okay, and, and this public road, it would have to come back to us?
Yes.
Correct?
If they were to do a standard county or city street, it would go through the preliminary plat process.
And would that be maintained by the county?
Yes, if the property is retained in the county.
Okay, but if not, it comes to us?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
In either case, the subdivision plat would come to you for?
Right.
Right-of-way.
Right, exactly. Okay, and then I have a question for the applicant's rep. And that is, you've already subbed about it. I know, I noticed that in 2018, the three lots north of that, where this owner owned, was in partnership with another owner, the Nunn's subdivision, that that was annexed into the city in 2018. It was part of this larger plot, plot of property. And that's already been subdivided and into three-acre lots. And now we have Lot 1 and Lot 2. Lot 2 coming off subdivided from Lot 1, or was part of Lot 1. And so my question is, or I just wanted to know, you are aware that if, or when the owner decides to come back to subdivide Lot 1, he is going to have to have public roads in there? So I guess my other question is, why not just go ahead and subdivide it all? Show us where the roads are, and come back and, and get it over with in one piece?
If I could give you a little bit of background?
Excuse me, Chairman. Could you come forward to use the microphone?
Under the podium, please. Sorry, thank you.
So what's really going on here is that this property, the owner of the property simply wants to give his daughter a three-acre lot because she's cramped in the, the house that she's in now. And so he, and the three acres is because that's what's required by the Health Department. So minimum of three acres, which it meets. And actually, two things. One, the comment was made that when that's developed, I think really the appropriate phrase would be if that's developed. Because to my knowledge, there are no plans to develop anything. This is simply a father who wants to give his daughter a three-acre lot. And the county didn't want to, they had a concern with the easement. So what we did was, we made this a pole instead of an easement. In other words, the, the 60-acre, the 60-foot strip is needed to Lot 2. So it's actually, the daughter will own the entire thing, going to the road. The father will have the use of the roadway. And he has, if, if property should change or whatever, in other words, he has access because if you notice below that 60-foot strip, he goes down with hundreds of feet, nearly 400 feet of access to his existing property, which then crosses into Macon County. And he has a lot of access to go around. So we're, we're trying to satisfy the county's future requirements and present requirements, and make the city happy too. And again, to my knowledge, there's, there's no development going on. This is just a father who wants to give his daughter three acres.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to approve waiver.
All right, we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Last, but certainly not least, the next item on the agenda is a recommendation to City Council for zoning ordinance text amendments to Section 2, sorry, Article 2, Section 203, Definitions, and Article 6, Signs, Subsection 602, Definitions. definitions and Article 6 signs, subsection 602 definitions and 604 prohibited signs. The purpose of this text amendment is to remove the prohibition of murals within the city limits, thereby permitting them within the city of Auburn. As you all are aware, earlier this year, the mayor appointed a study group to kind of determine a methodology to allow murals within the city limits, and that group was comprised of two planning commissioners, Janet Jager and Marcus Marshall, who is no longer with the planning commission, and two city council members, Bob Parsons and Beth Whitten. And Beth Whitten was asked to chair that study group. And we met with the study group and had several meetings to discuss these objectives. And what was determined, sorry, during this meeting, were six objectives that staff looked further into with the group, the main one being to remove murals as a prohibited sign, and to amend, if necessary, the definition of a mural, and any other definitions with the zoning ordinance as it relates to a mural. And also to determine if any nuisances or obscene texts or images would apply to a mural. And then lastly, to consider adding a definition of graffiti. So what was determined was to no longer consider a mural a sign. So it would be a work of art, and thereby we removed that definition from the sign section and added it to the overall general definitions in the zoning ordinance, and removed from Section 6, Article 6. And then the definition now would refer to a mural as only a sign with a graphic that had a commercial message would not be deemed a mural. It would thereby be a commercial sign. So we modified that definition a bit. And because there was no definition for a sign in the zoning ordinance, we added that definition as well. And lastly, we removed murals from the prohibited sign section. And that is, uh-oh. Every time I have this issue. Thanks, Logan. We did run all of these recommendations by our legal department and reviewed all of the changes, and the proposed changes are recommended for approval and forwarding those to the City Council. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. None?
No questions, no?
Just a nuance.
Public hearing first, maybe?
Just a little nuance here.
Sure.
If I'm, if I'm putting a mural up?
Mm-hmm.
With artwork?
Yes.
It can't have any words on it?
It can.
It can.
Mm-hmm. It would be.
That doesn't make it a sign by adding?
Only if it had a commercial?
Right.
Message, yes. Then it would be considered a sign. Not to say that a commercial sign could not be painted.
Right.
Any other questions?
So just to clarify what he said, the designation there, the difference between a sign and a mural is the commercial message, and that, and that is the designation between the two?
Yes, yep.
Perfect.
And who makes that designation?
If the mural is painted and it is deemed to be a commercial message, then we would contact the business where that sign is located. Because at that point, it would be a sign, and they would need to permit that.
Okay. All right, this agenda item does require a public hearing, so I'm going to go ahead and open that, if anybody would like to speak. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing, so we can continue to discuss. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for staff on this item?
Like the motion to recommend a City Council to amend Article 2 and Article 6 of the city Auburn zoning ordinance in accordance with Item ZT 2022-001.
Second. Second. With a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. I think that's all the items on our agenda. I don't have any communication other than to say thank you for your patience with me this evening while I worked through chairing the meeting at the last minute. Does staff have any communication for us?
I do, thank you. I just wanted to introduce a new planner in our department. So Christian Togmas joined us, recently was working in Florida for Apaca, Florida, and previously had some time spent in Texas and Arkansas. So we're happy to have him on board, and this is his first meeting attending. In the future, he'll have items that he can present to you. I know he's looking forward to that. Thank you.
If there's no other announcements, I will adjourn the meeting. Y'all have a great night.